January 2025, meeting to order. First item on the agenda would be the invi-- I'm sorry, Pledge of Allegiance. If we'd all stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, if you'll, please all bow your heads with me, I'll give the invocation. Dear Lord, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight and gather and meet on behalf of the town. We'd like to ask for your guidance and direction over this meeting, and we'd like to ask that you, all your prayers be with us tonight in decisions we make. For us in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
All right, item number three is the swearing in of planning board members. New member, Amanda Cryovers?
Chris O'Verges.
Chris O'Verges, okay, I wasn't close. And then Mr. Pierce and myself are returning for another term.
Of course, it's Chris O'Verges.
Chris O'Verges, okay. Can you put his left hand up?
Left hand off, I think, right hand on the Bible.
Yes, okay. And can you repeat after me? I, Amanda Chris O'Verges.
I, Amanda Chris O'Verges.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a town of Roseville Planning Board member.
As a town of Roseville Planning Board member.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
No problem.
I appreciate your time, thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Me, thanks.
I might just sign this, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll collect it after me.
Okay, sure, thank you.
Repeat after me. I, Mike Moss.
I, Mike Moss.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As a town of Roseville Planning Board member.
As a town of Roseville Planning Board member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Repeat after me. I, Frank Pierce.
I, Frank Pierce.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As a town of Roseville Planning Board member.
As a town of Roseville Planning Board member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce.
How many years is it, Frank? How many years am I doing this?
Forty-eight.
Are you?
This'll be fifty, right? This'll be your fifty.
Mike, stop it, cut it out.
He had forty-nine.
We're never gonna catch up.
All right, couple more years.
Add 'em all together.
Well, congratulations, Mr. Pierce, and welcome Amanda to the board.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And hopefully you'll, I'm sure you'll be a great addition to the board.
I appreciate that.
All right.
Congratulations to you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you. The next, that brings us to the next item, is the election of a chair and vice chair. Can we do those, we need to do it separately?
Yes, so we'll start with chair.
All right, first one would be nominations for chair.
I make a motion to make Moss be nominated for the chairman's position.
All right, we have a nomination or any other nominations? All right, hearing none, the, I guess we'll. Take that as a motion of the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you for the reelection. All right, now open for nominations for vice chair.
I make the motion that we nominate Sir Donnie Lawrence.
All right, we have a nominee as well. Nomination of second, any other nominees? Hearing none, all is in favor of Mr. Lawrence being elected vice chair? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Congratulations, Vice Chair.
Sir Vice Chair.
Sir Vice Chair.
Denoted since our last meeting.
All right, on to item number five of the agenda, is the approval of the November 25th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting Minutes. Is that correct? And hopefully everyone's had a chance to read those. If there are no corrections, the floor will be open for a motion.
I move that we accept the November 25th, 2024 minutes as printed.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion of the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right. Okay, on to the regular agenda item. First up is TA 25-01.
Thank you so much, good evening, planning board, great to see you all. And as we've already heard, we're having some technical difficulties this evening, so I hope everyone got their hard copy of the packet. Did that get passed out?
I believe I need one.
To go around?
Coming around.
Thank you.
Oh, I didn't get one.
I did get one.
I think Tanner has.
Oh, Tanner's got them. He. I was like, where is that?
Thank you. Thank you, Tanner.
Thank you.
All right, great. So the first text amendment on the agenda is TA 2501. That is, oh, great, thank you. So TA 2501, text amendments to the residential medium dimensional standards. So over the last year plus, we've had a lot of conversations about residential density and dimensional standards. We even spent three hours talking about it and some other related things at the work session in November, the joint work session with the town board and the planning board. So Amanda, you might be interested in going back and watching that one if you have three hours to spare. I know a lot of us don't, but it was an interesting one. So the other thing we have going on right now is an affordable housing plan or housing plan. And that's pretty close to being finished. It's been presented to the town board once before while it was going, you know, being worked on. So it will come to you all for review within the next couple of months. So we're expecting a final draft or very close to final draft from the consultant in the next week or so. And we'll be putting it up on the website for a 30-day comment period. So the reason I'm bringing that up is that we've been talking about housing through the course of that plan. And one of the big action items that's written in that plan is to diversify housing stock by taking a look at all the different residential zoning districts we have in the land development ordinance to see if there's room to make some changes. We've gotten a lot of feedback from the development community that the dimensional standards, meaning the setbacks and the lot width and such are limiting to various product types, you know, different, even just single-family detached housing. And another piece that's worth considering when we're looking at this is that we are in the midst of an update to our comprehensive plan. And I wish that was a little farther along. We'll be doing some community engagement with that in the coming months. And I'm excited to have everyone be able to be involved in that. And as the planning board, I'm looking forward to, you know, diving in a little deeper there. And something Mayor Protimsky and I have talked about is bringing that comprehensive plan project, whatever is going on, to you at every meeting, just to, you know, keep some dialogue going about that. So mentioning a package of LDO text amendments, the housing plan, and the comp plan update, and all the conversations we've had over the past year plus. So with that, I also mentioned developers have been saying they would like to have some more options with lot sizes. So the reason we're talking about the residential medium dimensional standards tonight is that I've had developer Ellis Development Group give some suggestions. And I took what they suggested and edited it some. I thought it was a reasonable idea to consider, so I'd love to get your feedback on that tonight. And also looking for your input on, is this something we should go ahead and move forward with? Or would you prefer to have a full package of text amendments related to various changes in the different residential zoning districts? For example, my professional opinion is I think we need another residential zoning district. Residential high, I think, is used sometimes incorrectly with rezonings in our community. And I think we could tweak that district and maybe add another district and make things feel a little more comfortable with that. So that's something our staff is still looking into and would certainly like to get your feedback on. That was my long introduction to TA 2501, so if you could just keep all of that in mind as we talk about residential medium. So residential medium falls in between our residential low and residential high zoning districts. And the by right lot size in residential medium is 15,000 square feet. So that's close to a quarter of an acre lot, if that helps you visualize. And when the LDO was first adopted in June 2021, residential medium included a cluster option with a 5,000 square foot lot with five-foot setbacks, 20-foot front setback, and I think 10-foot side setbacks. In 2023, I believe, we changed, or the town board voted to change the cluster option to a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet and an eight-foot side setback instead of a five-foot side setback. What has come in from the development community and staff has taken a look at is in addition to having an 8,000 square foot cluster lot, there could be a 7,000 square foot lot and a 6,000 square foot lot, each with varying dimensional standards proportional to the lot size. So if you have your packet in front of you, it is still the first page of the TA 2501 report. It's the table with the light blue at the top. So the items in blue are proposed, and the items in red are proposed to be deleted. And an important note at the bottom, this is something I added to what the Ellis Development Group provided to add some comfort, from the work session we had last year. I heard feedback from the planning board and the town board that there might be some comfort in having some smaller lots, but not having an entire subdivision of smaller lots. So to anchor that in, a special standard is suggested in a cluster development, no more than 35% of the lots could be smaller than 7,000 square feet. So that is making about a, you know, potential for a third of that subdivision to have 6,000 square feet, or 6,000 square foot lots. And there's very, there's not much residential medium already zoned land out there. So I can't think of a case right now that proposal would not have to come to the planning board and the town board for approval. And they would be a conditional zoning that allows the planning board and the town board to review and make comments. And then the town board can vote on whether or not they think that rezoning proposal is good. So I'm curious what you all think about having four different lot sizes in residential medium, the one by right at 15,000 square feet, and the cluster option being with lots 8,000, 7,000, or 6,000 square feet, or between that 8,000 to 6,000 square foot mark. And in case anyone doesn't remember what a cluster development is, in our land development ordinance, that option is given to have a cluster development where you would save 40% of the open space in exchange for smaller lots. The density does not change, it doesn't, will not, would not exceed five units per acre in the medium density residential category in our comprehensive plan. Predominantly single-family housing at three to five units per acre. So it stays in that zoning range, just smaller lots and more green space.
The, how did you come up with the 35% for lots less than 7,000?
I made it up based on what I thought was a reasonable proportion of, like, a third. I was thinking if we're looking at a subdivision, what feels comfortable? Maybe a third, maybe you all think it should be less or more, you know, like 50% or 25%. I was just imagining what would feel nice if you're walking through or driving through a neighborhood.
The, I notice you've, you've just got this for, a percentage for lots smaller than 7,000. So if, if, so in this case, they could do 35% 6,000, and the remaining 65 at 7,000?
Yes, or, they could, yes, they could.
Or at 8,000, it'd be the developer's choice.
I see what you're saying, maybe, maybe I was, maybe it should be a third, a third, a third. Or you could do all 8,000 if you were doing a cluster.
That was kind of my point.
Okay.
It's, if, if, you know, eight is the standard cluster.
Yes.
If you go less than that, maybe put a restriction on both the.
Both the six and the seven, okay.
Anything less than the eight, your sevens and your sixes.
That makes sense.
And that would, that would kind of force the different product types throughout the neighborhood, different home sizes, different lot sizes.
I like that.
Do you actually think a developer is gonna even bother with a 7,000 square foot lot? Because what all this is basically saying is we're giving them an option to even be more clustered, even more congested, without changing any other rules about open space or anything like that. We're just literally saying you can cram a lot more into this space. So why would they even, why would they even bother with the 7,000? Because they're just gonna look for the optimal way to make more money, and the 6,000 square foot lot's gonna do that.
I think this, I think the eights is what you would not see anymore of. I think you'd all be sevens and sixes.
Probably, well, maybe even so much that, but they might, just because the, the corner and the setbacks are a little bit different on them is why I thought, you know, the height and the width restrictions are a little bit different. But I don't know, I mean, you know, we've, we've had conversations and differences of opinion about clusters in the past. And I don't know, I just, I just think it introduces even more congestion. I just, I just don't see, I mean, what exactly are developers saying that we don't have enough options for what reason?
For different housing product types.
Yeah.
And then if I could answer your part about, you know, cramming or putting more in there, the density doesn't change. You actually can't achieve a five-unit-per-acre density with an 8,000 square foot lot. Because of the infrastructure that goes along into a neighborhood.
So then you're right, they're not gonna use an 8,000 square foot lot at all then.
And that's why I was proposing if we did a percentage, even if it was, you know, 30 and 30 on the eight and, or sevens and sixes.
Sure.
That way, it would, they couldn't do all sevens, you know, 65% sevens and 35% sixes.
Right.
They would have a maximum of each, of each square footage.
Sure, or maybe that special standard needs to go the other way. Maybe it needs to be a certain percentage, has to be the 8,000 square foot lot, and you can fill in the other way.
Yeah, I just, I don't know, just something, I, I just couldn't understand, like, what really changes in this? I mean, even if you say the maximum dwellings per unit, or the, the, not the dwellings per unit, the, per acre, units per acre doesn't change, then what gives? If, if, if you can create more houses in a smaller area, then that means you're not developing as much area. So that means more open space, or does that mean there's more space available for single-family homes, larger lot sizes in those areas? I'm just trying to understand, like, what does that really, what does that really produce as far as options?
Being able to fit in different housing types, or, you know, housing footprints, home sizes in the space, and working with topography, and allowing enough room for infrastructure that the five units per acre actually could be met.
I think one thing I look at it as is, you know, with the 8,000 square foot lots now, the minimum width is gonna be 70-foot wide. And if a builder has a 40-foot product he wants to build, he's basically got 15-foot side yards. He's building 15 more feet of street, install them with water lines, more infrastructure to get that house where you can, you know, minimize that infrastructure and what you're building to accommodate that 40-foot wide house.
Okay.
Because the, the depth of the lot's gonna be the same, it's just how wide it's gonna be.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, that helps me understand what, what, what changes with that, so I appreciate that.
That's, that's the way I see it, the biggest change is the width of the lots.
I guess what I'm just really concerned with, and it doesn't sound like this is opening up the opportunity for this to happen. I just don't want to see having these smaller lots introduce the ability to cram in more stuff in, in a situation where we already see congestion being an issue in neighborhoods, whether it's street sizes or what, or parking on streets. Because now that you've got houses much closer together, you know, now you don't have as much space. You might have two parking spaces, two cars that could be parked on a street, which is gonna happen in these communities, versus now we only have one. So now we have more cars parked on the street because you have, you know, less street to park on.
The density wouldn't change, I'm not asking, no change in the density for medium density residential.
Understood, but I mean, if you're, but if you're, if you have fewer, if you have smaller lots, then you have, you have less amount of space for on-street parking.
Okay, like, right, right in front of that home.
Yeah, right in front of the home, right? So unless we do something to make the setback long enough to make sure two cars can be parked in the driveway, then that becomes another story about where you're not, we're not promoting on-street parking in these really congested neighborhoods. That's what I get worried about, because you drive in any townhome community around here, and you have people parking at the end of their driveways, halfway blocking their mailbox or whatever, because there's just not enough parking, because, you know, these vehicles are, you know, 10 times bigger than they used to be.
Sure, yeah.
And so that's, that's what I get worried about, is if you can only fit a car and a half in a driveway, then somebody has to park, you know, in the street. So that becomes the other kind of concern about having that much congestion, so I don't know.
Okay. All, let's see, for the various cluster lot sizes, it has, has a 20-foot front setback, so that's definitely enough to pull your car in. But I know, like, most people, you don't keep room in your garage, and you have to be able.
Well, yeah, that's because they're not, yeah, that's another issue altogether. I don't even know how to address that. It's like every garage is too small nowadays, and I don't know if that's a building code or if it's just the way an ordinance is designed, or what.
Choice.
Huh?
Choice, you can order 10-foot wide, nine-foot wide, 11-foot wide. But you got too much stuff, you gotta put it in the garage.
Well, you can't fit a Ford F-150 in a garage anymore.
Yeah, if you don't mind putting it in the back hole. I, my only concern was really on the set, the side setbacks, the five-foot. I mean, it's, that's smaller than the difference between me and Donnie.
That's to the property line though, also.
Is it the property line?
It's a five.
So you still have a 10-foot.
Ten foot between houses.
Ten's five, I was thinking like, wow, that's.
Yeah, that's pretty close.
That's really close.
Yeah, that would be a setback from a property line.
So 10-foot's fine then.
That's what the villages is, when they built those, it was 10, 10 feet in the between.
I know we're, previously discussed around some of that, you know, the reflection off the sun and out the glass hitting the inner issue, and then the drainage in between the locations, just forces all that water somewhere.
Yeah.
Any other questions or thoughts, suggestions?
Anyone else have anything from Meredith? If we need to, if not, I guess we need a recommendation or?
Sure, staff does recommend approval of TA 2501 in order to offer some variety in lot sizes in the residential medium cluster development option. And a proposed motion would be, I move to recommend either approval or denial of TA 2501 because it is consistent with where it is or is not consistent with the comprehensive plan.
I think if we did get a motion.
With the modifications that you were suggesting.
Yeah, I would like to see the percentages.
Certainly.
Of the different areas, so that it all can be spread out a little more evenly.
I knew you all would have good ideas.
How did, how did you want to do that?
I was, I was thinking if we had a third, a minimum of a third of the lots at 8,000, and then a maximum of a third of the sevens and the sixes.
Combined, so they, right?
Well, no, a maximum of 7,000ths and a maximum of 3,000ths, so combined, they could make up two-thirds of the neighborhood. That would be my thoughts on it. And that still puts, so if somebody tried to completely max it out, the most they could have is a third of the neighborhood is 8,000, a third at 7,000, and a third at 6,000s.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Would that, we're quite, would that limit if I wanted to build a lot more 7,000?
Um, I.
Depending on the wording, right, well.
We'd be constrained by the third.
Right, I can't go more than a third.
Yeah.
So you could, I want to build 8,000, 7,000s, but I can only do a third of 7,000.
That's a good point. I guess, I guess you could do just between seven and eight possibly. If you, if you're not gonna do any below seven, that could take up two-thirds at that point in time.
We'll look at it as a mix of percentage.
Yeah, yeah.
No more than at the 6,000 level. But the rest can be made up of seven and eight.
Yeah, that might be a good one for Meredith to work on, the way.
I think, I, I, I understand what you're saying.
Something like a third of, of the 6,000, and then equally portioned for the other two, 7,000 and 8,000 maybe?
Yep, that's what I was thinking.
Probably the way to do that, right?
Then it would open the topography, because you can decide, I could put a couple more seven here, because it fits where I need to be.
Mm-hmm.
All right, now I get 7,000, 8,000s over here.
Yeah, I think, I think something like that would work. I think, my thoughts were just a way to encourage a mix of all, and not get too many of one kind.
All right. Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve TA 2501 with the added criteria that the maximum percentage of lots for 6,000 square foot does not exceed 33%, or should we say 35? We'll say 35, just for the numbers.
Yeah, I think it's kind of split.
35% with the remaining 65% split evenly between 7,000 and 8,000 square foot, or something to that.
Or more.
Or more, yeah.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
There's a second.
Motion of the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, on to the next item, TA 25-02.
This one may look familiar to most of you. Back at the November Planning Board meeting, you all recommended approval of TA 2403, which added clarity to the tree ordinance on where it applied. And it added the statement, plus your recommendation of addressing easements and town greenway easements. It added to the tree ordinance purpose and intent that it applied on town-owned property, town street rights of way, town easements and town greenway easements. And after that text amendment was approved by the town board on January 7th, it was pointed out to me by our legal counsel that we inadvertently took away application of section 6.2.5.10 through 6.2.5.13 about pruning trees and some other items. So this is a cleanup clarification to that tree ordinance applicability, just to note that those sections apply to town-owned and private property. I'm gonna make sure that trees are, tree removal and pruning is correct there. So that is all this one is, it's a cleanup. And want to say thank you to you for adding the recommendation before about the easements and the town greenway easements that that made it in there.
Okay, anyone have any other questions or discussion on this item?
So staff does recommend approval of TA 2502 to clarify the applicability of the tree ordinance and clean up the inadvertent mistake from before. And a motion could be made saying I move. And a motion could be made saying, I move to recommend approval of denial of TA 2502 because it is consistent or inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. In this case, it is consistent with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, our greenway plan, and our greenway plan, yes.
All right. There's no questions or discussion, floor is up for a motion.
I move that we recommend approval of TA 25-02.
She needed to make a statement about it consistent, or...
That would be great. That it's consistent with the comprehensive plan.
That it's consistent with the comprehensive plan.
All right. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, here none, motion carries. All right, discussion of other pending LDO text amendments.
Yes. So with that, let me pull up something. So in our next round of LDO amendments I'd like to bring to you at the February meeting, the first item I'd like to cover is section five uses in the LDO. And we discussed the allowance of government facilities in all zoning districts. Right now, they're not allowed in residential zoning districts. And we talked at the joint work session about how it could be great to have a public safety facility or a library, or, you know, if we needed whatever kind of office the town needed, could be helpful to have that in any zoning district, depending on what's going on around there. So when looking at that, the reason it's not included with today's package is I noticed in section five of the LDO, it starts off with a use table, and then it is followed by use standards, and the uses are categorized by like civic uses, residential uses, commercial uses, et cetera. I noticed that in the LDO, there are separate line items for government office, public facilities, and public safety facility. And I'm thinking it could be helpful to consolidate that into one thing, government facilities, government offices, government uses. And I think we added public facilities a couple years ago, so that could be in the watershed area. We added it to the overlay district section 4.2, so added that as an allowed use in the watershed area 'cause our public works facility was rezoned and then built in that area. And public facilities was added there without use standards. Already had public safety facility, I'm not sure we even noticed that one, and then we had government office. It seems confusing to have all of that, so I wanted to get your thoughts on consolidating that into one use if you're comfortable with that being government facilities for office, public facilities, and public safety.
I agree. I agree, one would cover it all, right?
Okay. Let's, we'll work on putting that together, that one should be pretty straightforward for the next meeting. Another one we've talked about briefly at the work session last year, signage within the main street corridor. This is inspired by the Roseville Downtown Development Association and the Appearance Committee. They have talked with planning staff numerous times about desiring some kind of level of cohesiveness with signage in our downtown area, and thought it sounded great. And I thought we could do something with a logo or markers, columns, materials, colors, something. But then I thought, is it really reasonable for staff to come up with that? This feels like something that needs community engagement to me, and I wanted to get your thoughts on that and see if we needed to do some kind of survey or have a meeting, or it could even be an online community meeting and a survey to get input on how to craft that. Or we come up with a couple of options and put it out for feedback, or we just rely on the typical legislative process and hope that by bringing it to the planning board and the town board and advertising for that legislative hearing, that we would get the input we need. It just, it seems like a very personal thing for our community, and I was just trying to decide whether or not extra community engagement will be helpful in this case, and I was curious what you all thought.
So isn't this, this is not something that is part of the community engagement group that Sheila's working with?
Um, this, the Appearance Committee came up with this, but I was, I was thinking about, I'm not sure I understand the representation of all the businesses and how that works. And whatever type of amendment might be approved would not be retroactive. It typically doesn't happen like that, it would be new things coming in, where people could voluntarily elect to change signage or add signage based on this.
Okay.
We may be fine with having the Appearance Committee be involved and the Planning Board. I was just wondering if anyone else wanted to participate?
I mean, I, my instinct is to say yes involve the residents, involve, you know, some sort of public comment. I don't think we need to do it without giving them something to look at first, because I think you're just gonna go all over the place with it. But at the same token, when I look around at other downtown areas that have different signage for those areas, it's more or less their logo reworked a little bit with the word downtown district in it. So I almost feel like we should just offer something like that and then, and then just run with it. I don't, I don't really think that it's, I don't think we need to complicate it more than it is because we're not, I don't, as long as we're not changing a logo and we're not changing any kind of intent or meaning behind all of that work that was done several years ago. But it doesn't, you know, if we just come up with that one thing, that one theme, if you will, and then say, this is what we're gonna do, maybe offer input on a color palette versus an actual design is kinda what my thought is.
All right.
Just, because I don't think we're introducing a new design, so we don't have to start from scratch in that respect.
Okay.
I think kind of along Derek's line, I think it'd be something if the, like the Appearance Committee could come up with a couple of ideas, maybe a choice of three or four, to kinda, and then get some feedback from the public and then have something we could, you know, make a recommendation on.
Okay.
So I could see that as something that could, could take some time and get involved with a bunch of opinions.
Yeah, if you had three to, three to five choices instead of, you're gonna get a hundred opinions, but get three to five choices for them to ask for, we could, yeah.
That is helpful, thank you. The last text amendment I wanted to talk with you all about has to do with our perimeter buffers. If you look at, I think it's section 6.2, Michelle can correct, Tanner can correct me if I'm wrong, or it's close to that, includes four different types of perimeter buffers. And three of them require fences and walls. And over the past year or so, I have made multiple interpretations to help developers save trees because I've had them come in and say to me, I will have to cut existing trees down to build this wall. And I'm like, that doesn't sound good. So where there have been existing, a good existing tree save, I have said, you don't have to do that 'cause you're meeting the intent. So that seems to be happening a lot, and I can't imagine that people wouldn't want to save existing trees if that's an option. So that's something I'd like to make more clear and concrete and put that in the ordinance instead of having it be me as the land development administrator making an interpretation. So I'm trying to think if there are other performance standards that would be helpful. Does it need to be, you know, a certain number of trees?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think you would want to look at the density of the trees and the diameter of the trees so that, you know, you're not having this, you know, toothpick type of...
Sure, sure, certain size.
Buffer, so yeah, I would think, and I would, I would think you would want to lean more on more established trees than younger trees.
Sure.
So...
Yeah, it's always a shame to cut those down, 'cause it takes a while to grow back.
Yeah, so, so I would lean toward that and, and a denser collection of those. I don't know about height though, or species, if that's gonna be something that... Because then, you know, in the wintertime, you got, you know, leaves drop off and...
Sure.
You know, that becomes an issue sometimes for barriers. I mean, just all the stuff that's happening behind Food Lion right now, you know, those townhomes are gonna, you know, be looking right at the back of that storage facility in the wintertime, but in the summertime, it's probably gonna look pretty decent, you know, so that becomes another issue about the opacity of the, of the existing tree line, whether it's a tall or shorter, you know, see-through sightline.
Right, and I think it's best practice to have a more opaque buffer between more different uses, you know, like commercial to residential, it needs to be...
Right.
Very opaque.
That would be the one thing I'd be worried about, is that, is it, 'cause most of the time, what, at least from my experience looking around, and most of the time, we're looking at pulling down planted pines anyway that were kinda designed to be harvested, but some of them are getting, you know, leaning up against these blue line buffers and stuff like that so that they don't offer as much as a buffer as you might think.
Sure. And I'm wondering if maybe some of those existing pine trees, if they were supplemented with new deciduous trees, maybe that is something better than tearing down the pines and building a wall. Or maybe it's an option, you achieve a certain amount of opacity, show us how you're gonna do it with trees, wall, or combination of the two. Just think it'd be nice to have some flexibility there.
If you build it up like a percentage, saying you can build a wall, you can build a fence, or fifty percent or seventy percent.
Opacity?
Yeah, for, if you're gonna leave the trees.
Okay.
And again, like to your point, like put up a bunch of holly trees, I think you can't see through those. But if you've got a bunch of pines, they're second to get a certain height, the base is gone, you can see right through.
Thank you for that. And that was the last one I had to discuss, and I know we have the Planning Director's Report.
Yes.
And didn't have anything to add there based on the fact that I already mentioned that your last recommendation for TA 2403 was approved, and then we just, we just made another recommendation to clean that one up. So that's all I had.
All right. On to the Town Attorney's Report. I think you have something.
I do. Hope you all received my email last week. I have a copy for each of you if you don't have it with you, but I'd love to walk through the bylaws and rules of procedure with you, get some thoughts, feedback, anything that, as you were reviewing it, causes for concern. You know, we had shared before that, you know, we have bylaws in place, and this is really just coming back through and updating it, something we should be doing each year and ready to post it online once we get to that place. So I can pass them out if we, if that'd be helpful to walk through together. Is there an extra one? Will y'all pass it back down? Oh, here, I have another one, I'm sorry. Never mind.
Okay, my question is, is there intent to review them tonight, or are we looking for approvals?
Review tonight.
Okay.
And take your feedback, and then we'll, I mean, and then we can bring it back and approve them at a later meeting unless we're all happy with it in the way it is. There's a couple of things, as I was going through it again today, there's a couple of... Do we need some more?
No.
Okay. Okay. Meredith and, I have them for you all as well. This is helpful if you guys want them while you're, while we're reviewing.
Thank you.
Yep.
So we'll just walk through, and if you have any thoughts or suggestions or questions, you know, we can certainly talk about that as a group. So the first rule, one and two, are really kinda that general legalese. You know, the authority for the Planning Board, the authority for these rules, where that all comes from. You know, just, just that general legalese there. Moving on to quorum and attendance, obviously a quorum is necessary. What is a quorum? You know, that fancy, fancy word, it just means that it's a majority of the actual membership that has to be here in order for us to conduct business. And what we mean by conducting business is actually, you know, moving forward with motions like we did today. That was conducting business, if that makes sense. A Planning Board member who is unable to attend a meeting should be reaching out to the Planning Department as far in advance as you know that you're gonna be missing that meeting. You know, obviously emergencies happen, but the sooner you can let the Planning Department and our chair know, that would be ideal. I will say, under rule three, part E, if you were reading through, you probably saw repeat language. And so that language, part E, would be struck, and it would actually take the language in rule nine, which we can come back to in a minute, but it has to do with attendance and the requirement that if you were to miss three consecutive meetings as a member of the Planning Board, that that gives the Board of Commissioners, you could be dismissed from that, that role. You know, it's, it's important that you're here, and you all, we're full tonight, of course. And you guys are very, very good about that, but, you know, we put that in place in case there's a reason we need to.
Question in that respect.
Yes.
I can't remember reading through the rest of it, whether or not there was anything about virtual meetings or virtual attendance.
That's, yeah.
Is this specific to physical attendance only?
That is physical attendance, yes.
Does that need to be spelled out that way, or...
So I will say that rule five, if you look down just in a minute, we have the remote participation at Planning Board meetings, and we're adopting the policy that the Board already hasn't, the Board of Commissioners already has in place.
I think that's why I missed it. I was like, is that like, just like one line at the bottom of the page?
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, I was like, wait a second, I looked at this, I'm like, I missed it, okay.
No, that's a great question, and so we, we will adopt that rule, and it's, in general, we should be in place, right? And so if we, if we need to adopt that policy or whatever it may be, we can go back and refer to that policy, but in general, that's for, for physical presence.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, of course, great question. Meetings are, of course, open to the public, anybody can attend. The conduct of our meeting for each agenda item there, we have presentation by staff, presentation by the applicant, discussion by the Planning Board, and then action by the Planning Board. And action, of course, is, you know, making the motion and, you know, whether we recommend to approve or deny, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go on. We just talked about rule five, and you can see we have a misnumber there, rule six. So again, a couple of things that we'll have to go back and change, but meeting minutes, of course, you know that you adopt the minutes at the meeting for the previous meeting. I will say that we are going to add part C here. There is already a report that goes to the Commissioners at their meeting regarding our text amendments and rezonings, but we're gonna add a little bit more information to that going forward, and we're gonna have the chair sign off on that. So those will be put together by our clerk and the Planning, the Planning Department, and then it'll come before you to make sure, so what is going to the Board is a little bit more detailed than what they've currently been receiving, so they know more of what we're discussing at these meetings.
So that, so let me, if I understood you, so that's gonna be written and then sent to the chair?
Yes.
And then the chair essentially signs off on it, right?
Correct, and yes, that is, that's how we have it set up right now.
And from that point, is it distributed to the rest of the Board as well?
It certainly...
Or a document with the minutes also, or is this just in-house?
It would, it will go then, it's, it's a report that's gonna go to the Commissioners. So it will be in the report, or the staff report that would be coming before Commissioners. So if, that is something that you feel like the whole Board should review before the, the chair signs off?
I'm not so worried about the review of it per se, as much as I would just like to know what was signed off on. So I think once the chair signs off on it, it should be disseminated to the Board.
Great.
And then if anybody has an issue with how that was modified or edited or written, then that could be addressed before the Town Board.
Sure.
I think that just gives us everybody a little bit of an opportunity to have oversight as needed.
Great, that sounds good. Is everyone comfortable with that, or...
Yeah, I, my only thought would be, should it...
Just do it.
Give them an opportunity before they sign off.
Ahead, yep. We're just, that, that, the hard, the hard part is, does everybody have to sign off? So then it, you know, it's really the responsibility of the chair to make sure that it's being taken care of. And this can be, you know, we're gonna, it's, it's new that we're gonna handle it that way, so we can, you know, see how the, how it grows, and if we feel like it's an issue, we can come back and address it.
My thoughts would be when we send it out, just say, hey, you got a day, two days to let me know, and if I don't hear back, I assume you approve it.
Right. And it may be, you know, if an item's not going to the Commissioners the very next month for some reason, we would have time to talk about it, but it, we may just have to feel this one through and figure out exactly how to implement it. But I think that those are great suggestions. Yeah, we can certainly adjust it accordingly. Onto rule eight, broadcasting and recording of meetings, this is nothing new. Everyone has a right to come in and record a meeting. Should, you know, the media show up for some, some reason, we can tell them where they can record from and that sort of thing. Obviously, we hardly ever, I don't think, that's my knowledge, have we had an issue with that? But should we, this, this allows the chair to kinda direct where, where they could, could place their equipment. Onto the organization, this is a little bit more just about the membership, our organizational meeting things we actually handled tonight. And this all, you know, comes from the general statutes. So we have seven members, that's a proportional relationship between those who live in the corporate limits and who are in the ETJ. The members are, of course, appointed by the Board of Commissioners, except those in the ETJ have to be approved by Wake County. Again, this is just statutory. The duration of service, a lot of this is also in our, in the LDO as well. But just so you know, the duration of service is three years. You can serve a maximum of two years, however, the Board of Commissioners can choose to extend that. If they, if you, you know, want to stay on, and they want you to stay on, you know...
Two terms, you said two terms, but it's consecutive and they can come back.
Correct, two successive terms, that's correct. But again, it's at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners, so they could choose, hey, let's keep them on, so. But in general, you, that's how it's kinda set for. But in general, you, that's how it's kind of set forth, right? Vacancies, you know, we've, we've had vacancies on the board before, and we, we handle it by having someone be reappointed. And again, that attendance, Part V, right there, is going to be moved back to that section on the first page.
Can I go back to the?
Yeah, absolutely.
Duration of service. So do we, is this sufficient, or should we have the same wording in here, as, as Jim had pointed out, that we have it with the two years, and then they can sit off a year and come back? Does that need to be in here? Or as long as it's at the board level, we don't need it anymore?
I think, I think it covers it with the successive terms in there, that language is there, but if you feel like we need to clarify it further, we certainly can. And again, it's, or longer at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners. So, I mean, there's no, the way that this is written, certainly, if the board feels that a member should continue to be on, they don't have, they can go beyond that.
Okay.
So in other words, if I'm hearing, because sometimes I think I'm hearing the word terms and years being mixed up, because it's two terms, three years, and I've heard two years mentioned a couple times.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but I'm saying, it may be me mixing it up, so three-year term.
You did, so I just wanted to make sure I understand where the question, the qualification or clarification was coming from.
Three-year term, two successive terms of three years.
Board of Commissioners can allow a board, a planning board member to run a third consecutive term if they so desire.
There's no running, but if the board chose to appoint someone to a longer term, yes, that is how that is written. If we don't like that, we could certainly discuss that, but.
That's just what I, that's what I was trying to clarify with the word terms and years, so, okay.
If you've taken over in midterm for somebody who's left, and you have signed by the Board of Commissioners, is that considered the first term?
No.
No.
My, my understanding is it wasn't.
It's not, because Frank took over for Jim, and that wasn't his first term.
Right.
It was, he was appointed for that.
And I was appointed for mine as well, so my understanding is it doesn't count as a, as the first term.
I just think it's not.
Right.
You want, you want that to be clarified, too?
Yeah, yeah.
Great, yep.
If you come in the day after, you know, you started today, and then you leave for whatever reason, and we got to appoint somebody, there's a, you're filling out that term.
Right.
Okay, if that doesn't count, right, that's fine, we don't have a number.
And that could be just successive full terms or something.
More than half, right?
Yeah.
If you're, if you're fulfilling more than half of a term, you could be considered, serving a term. The board can always say, serve another one.
Right.
And they could always choose not reappoint you after the first term.
Correct.
My only concern is, the same people can be sitting on this board forever, and that doesn't allow other people in the community an opportunity to serve, and so I just want to be careful in how we word that part.
And that's hence the one-year break that needed to be taken after that two consecutive years.
I think some of the concern that we heard and why, I think there was discussion to draft it like this with the discretion, is sometimes there have been vacancies that have not been able to be filled, and so you had the opposite issue.
Right.
So if there is somebody that's willing and able, and they want to, that's where that came from, completely hear what you're saying, but I think if we're making it, again, discretionary, like, the, the board can decide, you know?
Right.
The, the Board of Commissioners can decide that, you know, they can or they can't. So, you know, certainly, if we feel like it's being abused, we can amend this, the, the rules allow that to be amended, so that could be something to, to come back. That's a great question, but totally up to you all.
Very real issue of not having the people to step up to fill the roles. So yeah, that's good.
I wonder if you get the opposite as the town grows, because you've got a lot of new homes and housing and people, and?
Maybe.
Does it, do you change the, the number, because you're all of a sudden representing 30,000 people rather than?
And, and let me say this, too, we should be revisiting these every year, so this is not something that is in stone for the next 25 years. So, you know, in next January, if we feel like the board's not changing, it's the same people, and we'd want other opinions, I mean, clearly, nobody wants that, right? But, you know, we can, we can make that determination then, if, if you feel like that's not, or we can go ahead and make it now, it's completely.
Well, I think the only way we can address the issue that has been brought up, that I also recognize, is to say something like, and I don't know how to, how to qualify it, but you'd have to say something like, in the absence of applicants or appointed, the ability to appoint people, in the absence of interest, you know, a, a third term can be honored or issued by the town of Commissioners, you know? Again, I don't know how you say it, but you know what I'm saying, just something to the effect that says, that way, you can't just have the board, the town board appointing even if there's a line of people that want to do this, because technically, they could. So that's what I'm saying, if we can call out that if there are applicants of interest.
You qualify the other way, right? In the absence of any qualified applicant, the board can elect to extend.
There you go, yeah, exactly, see, something like that. That, I think that helps figure that out, there's still probably room for abuse, but at least that puts something that, if somebody wanted to get in and didn't get in, they'd have, they could point at that and say, well, wait a second, what happened here?
How does everybody feel about that?
I mean, overall, we, we still serve at the discretion of the board, right?
Correct.
So we, we, our terms can be ended at any time.
Correct.
If the board sees it necessary.
So, okay.
I think that the term, at the discretion of the board, carries a lot of weight, either way, to extend terms or something.
My only point there, though, is like, okay, well, what if the board is, you know, I don't want to say corrupt, but what if, but what, I mean?
That's real, though.
I don't know, I mean, what, if it's, if it's really, because you're, what is it, majority vote, so, you know, if you've got a night where there's only enough of a quorum, you only need one, you know, you know what I'm saying, the, the numbers just still allow?
And I'm not opposed to, to, you know, putting in lack of applicants or something. I think that's been more of an issue in the past than, than having too many, is not having enough.
Yeah, I just think it's a safe call, and, and even to the point, the board still can say whatever they want, even if we put that in there, but at least it just gives, it gives somebody the opportunity to point at something and say, hey, this isn't followed this way, as opposed to being something that's really open to interpretation.
Okay, we'll massage that language then and try to add that in. The next section is really kind of what we've done here tonight, is the, the scheduling of our organizational meeting, which is going to be the first month of the calendar year, so our January meeting typically, unless we don't have a January meeting, then it would be whatever the next month we meet. And so at that meeting, we would do the oath of office for any new or reappointed members, the selection of the chair and vice chair, and then Section E here is just that a member of the planning department or town administration provides administrative support to the planning board. There are different types of meetings. We are typically living in Rule Ten, regular meetings. I, since I have been on the board with you all, I don't think we've ever had a reason for a special meeting or an emergency meeting. That's, you know, more typically seen, you all actually just saw this last week with weather, and we fortunately haven't had weather, but that would be a case where maybe we would need to call an emergency or special meeting, so we've put this language in here to give us the option, but again, generally, we're going to live in regular meetings. There's special and emergency meetings just have different notice requirements, and that's really what most of this is, is talking about, and what that looks like, who can call it, and that sort of thing. With recessed meetings and canceled meetings, you know, if something crazy comes up and a massive ice storm starts to hit while we're in the middle of a meeting that we weren't expecting, you know, obviously, again, when those sorts of things are happening, we know that we can schedule an emergency or special meeting should we need to handle something, but should something happen, we lose power, you know, whatever it may be, we can, we can recess the meeting, cancel the meeting, you know, and reschedule it to a different time. Moving on to the agenda, again, a lot of this is just putting into words, things that we're already, already doing. So preparation, the planning department, as they wonderfully do, will prepare our agenda, they're going to get that out at least two business days before the meeting to you all, and then also post it on the website. The agenda contents, of course, are going to be the background information, the staff reports on everything that we're going to be considering. The order of business, items placed on the regular agenda, you know, this is what we typically follow, our call to order, pledge of allegiance and invocation, approval of meeting minutes, and then we go through our agenda items that are on, and then the reports from planning department, town attorney, the planning board itself, if there's anything. And of course, the chair could call those out of order for some reason if we needed to move things up in the agenda, this gives the chair the right to do that. Then we talk about the role of the presiding officer, and so you can here have all the kind of rules of the chair, these things that, that Mr. Moss already does, Chair Moss already does. The chair does have the duty to vote, we've talked about that before. The chair also can recognize members. We've a, the way we've operated in general, we're not always calling on people to speak, we've, we've kind of let it be more free, but this reserves the right, if, for whatever reason, we feel like we need to, to be more strict in how we do that, that Chair Moss could call on, you know, each individual to speak if needed. He's going to rule on rules of parliamentary procedure, and, and so on, can call brief recess, can adjourn in an emergency, all of those sorts of things. The vice chair serves in the chair's absence. You know, we've had that a couple of times, where our vice chair has to step in if, if Mr. Moss has to, you know, recuse himself, or can't be here for a meeting, our vice chair steps in. What happens when both of them are absent? Well, then, the remaining members of the board can elect someone to serve as the chair for that particular meeting. Motions and voting, down at the bottom, the actions by the planning board. You know, we have been using motions, you guys are very familiar with, you know, providing a motion, then having a second. We're going to talk a little bit more about language kind of going forward. Tonight, I think Meredith did a great job of talking about how we're going to, our, our motion is, I move to recommend approval or denial, and then we're going to make sure we're making a statement about it being consistent with the comprehensive plan. We need to make sure that we're being very consistent in that language, and so our slides in the future will have that, staff report will have a very clear, I recommend approval. You all are not approving, that's what our Board of Commissioners does, right? We're recommending whether we approve it or deny it, and, and like we did tonight, adding language to things where we have discussion and, and want the Board of Commissioners to hear some of the thoughts from what you all have. And then a lot of these are just kind of very specific, you know, rules, there's only one motion on the board on the floor at a time, you know, how we withdraw a motion, what happens with debate. This is something I do want to highlight here, so, once there is a motion on the floor, we want to have a time of debate, and so we want to make sure that we give everybody a chance to speak. The person who makes the motion should be able to be the person to speak first, and then everybody else should have an opportunity, and everyone else should have an opportunity to speak before that person speaks again. Just making sure that we're hearing from everyone. And again, we do a great job of this informally already, but if, if forever, if it ever became an issue, that would be the procedure.
So is that something, as I take a motion in a second, open it back up for?
Yes.
For the discussion?
Yes, and a lot of times, we're doing our discussion ahead of it, which is great, but it gives that chance to have more discussion again, and let's make sure that we're, we all agree with the motion the way it's stated. Do we need to amend the motion in some way, or, or any, any sort of that?
Board only, just for clarification.
Correct, yes.
I'll try to remember that moving forward.
That's great, that's great. And again, this is, these are, these are, these come from Robert's Rules of Procedure, which is, you know, kind of the, the, what everyone uses out there, and so, again, we do a great job here, and this is really just to kind of formalize and do what we already are doing. You know, again, adoption by majority vote, we can, we, we do it by show of hands, and we'll continue to do that unless we feel the need to do something else. You can do it by roll call, we could do it in a different way, but this, this just allows for that. Again, the duty to vote, everyone has a duty to vote unless you're excused from voting, which we can talk about here, which is for recusal. We've had situations before where we've had someone have to recuse. Usually, that's going to happen when it's a member's has a financial interest in the, in the, what's going on. This comes directly from the statute, in fact, I'll read it to you, so, "Members of appointed board shall not vote on any advisory or legislative decision regarding a development regulation adopted pursuant to this chapter where the outcome of the matter is being, being considered is reasonably likely to have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact on the member. An appointed board member shall not vote on any zoning amendment if the landowner of the property, subject to the rezoning petition, or the applicant for the text amendment, is a person with whom the member has a close family, business, or other associated relationship." You guys do a great job of this already, but just keep that in mind, if, if there is some, you know, relationship that you may have, or a reason that, that you should not be voting on the, the matter, just keep that in mind and recuse yourself.
Question, with the awareness, like, I work for an investment bank, so I'm not always aware of?
Sure.
What they're investing in, for obvious reasons.
Right, it would be, yes, you need to have knowledge of it, sure. Something here that we haven't had in the past, and again, I don't, I think you all are very good at knowing when you have a, have a, a reason to recuse yourself, but in case you know that so-and-so should actually probably recuse themselves from this matter, you can, we can have the board bring that, and you all can vote to, to choose for them to recuse, to recuse, or be recused. And then substantive and main motions, I do want to share with you all, this is something I think has been shared with the town board, and Attorney Neal, Town Attorney Neal suggested we share this, I share this with you all as well. This is a summary of some motions that can be helpful for you all as we're going through, and again, you're not going to use these, many of these all that often, as they're coming around, you know, the first several are familiar, we already use adjourn the meeting, we already use recess the meeting. One that I heard the Board of Commissioners has liked is the point of privilege. If we're in the middle of a discussion, and it is just sweltering hot in here, and you need a second, we can say point of privilege, and you can say, you know, Chair Moss, can we do, can you find out, can we figure out how we can get the AC back on or something? You know, it's, it's, you know, there's a, you can bring it up, you know, there, and there, there would be no vote on that. So as you can see in the chart, it's just giving you the words to say, can you interrupt or not? Do you need a second for this? Do you not? And then, you know, the voting, how many votes are needed, it's majority. Some that we have had discussions about before, you know, if there's a matter that's before us and we're not ready to take a vote on it, you know, we want to send the applicant back to revisit their application, you know, we've, we, there's a lot of terms that have been thrown out to, for that before. We often probably really just want to call that, we want to say, can we postpone to a, a future meeting to make a decision? And if the applicant, you know, wants a decision, that's one thing, but if, if, you know, if the applicant has decided they're going to come back, they've made a decision to come back to us, you know, with an updated plan, this has happened a handful of times, we just want to postpone that item. If there's a, a motion on the floor, and we want to amend it, somebody wants to change some of that, we can say, I move to amend the motion by, and we can state how we're amending that motion. Again, you guys are already very, very good at doing this, but these are just some out there to kind of review and keep in mind as we have our meetings. So we'll let you take those home and, and kind of review them. I've heard it's been very helpful, though.
Thank you.
Yes.
Very helpful. I have to carry the marker.
All right, we are at the bottom of Page Five, public comment. The planning board may receive public comment on any agenda item at the discretion of the chair. Members of the public wishing to provide comments on an agenda item are limited to three minutes per person. The chair's decision not to allow public comment or to limit the amount of time allowed for public comment may be appealed or voted on by the planning board members present. Any thoughts or consideration with that? Let us know anything about, again, it's not a public hearing, the public doesn't have the right to speak, we can allow them to speak, but they do not have to speak, and that can be at the discretion of the chair.
Three minutes is a guideline that can be extended as the chair's. Three minutes is a guideline that can be extended.
Yep, that's what it, yep, the chair can, can allow that.
I guess that's something, if we had a big crowd, we would just make sure, announce it beforehand, a reminder.
Right.
If there's a time limit.
Right. And again...
Usually our crowds aren't that large.
It's true. And again, we do not have to allow public comment, it's not a public hearing. Everyone has the right to, to talk at the Board of Commissioners meeting, but when we do hear from the public, we can limit it. Committees, again, this is something I think that was briefly mentioned a long time ago, the, if we ever needed to have a committee, a smaller committee of the planning board to discuss things, it's not something I necessarily think we anticipate, but again, it's here should we ever need to be able to do that. And then miscellaneous, if we want to amend any of these rules, we can do so, it takes a two-thirds vote to approve that. And then again, Rule 31, we use Robert's Rules of Order here for a lot of the, the procedures. Any other thoughts or questions as we've gone through this, anything we need to go back and talk about? We will make those few changes and of course bring it back to you to adopt.
I just have a question on Rule 14 about the preparation of agendas. What is, I don't want to say consequence because it sounds bad, but, but what happens when that, those agendas and the packets and all the information that goes in there doesn't come on two full days? Because that would mean by the end, by the close of business on a Wednesday, we should get the packet. Because two business days, as it says, is Thursday, Friday, if our meeting's on a Monday.
I'm, I'm guessing that that has been interpreted as Friday, Monday, but I see what you're saying, the way that's worded.
Trying to understand is like, you know, is, is today considered a business day? Because this is the day of the meeting and it says before, two days before, two business days before the meeting.
Okay. What would you all, what would you like to see? What, I mean, what, what do we want to...
Well, I think, I think the planning board should certainly weigh in a little bit to understand what kind of pressures they're under.
Agreed.
That's why I'm bringing that up, because I know we've seen it on Friday sometimes and that gives us the weekend, but I'm just, based on what's, how it's stated here, I don't want anybody to be inappropriately held accountable for something that they're already used to doing and everybody doesn't have a problem with, so...
Meredith?
I have a quick comment there. I think it'd be great if we could do a better job of getting it out earlier. I've actually been thinking that we should have everything figured out a week before the meeting and then give you all more like the minimum of what Erin mentioned in the document.
So, so having, having heard that, it sounds like if we're defining two business days, are we going to include or exclude the actual day of the meeting? And if we exclude it, then I think that gives you two, three days of leeway based on your internal goal. Because in that, because if you're trying to get the Friday or, you know, like the Monday, then you've got Monday, Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday...
I think it'd be great if we could get it to you by Wednesday. I, I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll add language to clarify that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be, that would be helpful. And I mean, I, I would say we, you know, need to really be a hard, fast rule, but, because, you know, light agenda like this, you know, getting it on...
Right.
Late Thursday, really wasn't that bad, but we've got four subdivisions, have we get it late on Thursday, it's a lot to look over.
Yeah.
Great.
I think staff's done a really good job of trying to get it to us as quick as they can.
Yep.
Anything else we should consider as we, does everybody feel comfortable with this?
Question, I guess.
Yeah.
You, you made a statement just a little while ago that, you know, we're a recommendation committee, we're not a approval committee, so we're recommending for the town board, but where does it state, you know, basically, when we get into a rezoning case and it's, you know, they want to rezone residential, commercial, mixed use, whatever, a lot of times we get off on the, well, what are you putting there? Is this going to be a two-story apartment? We don't, we don't stick to the rezoning and we're not really defining that in here anywhere.
Okay.
That I see. So what I'm just saying is, if an applicant's trying to rezone, then we need to work on the rezoning of what's going in that particular land, but not particularly what they're building there, what, what that reference is, because we're recommending to the town board to rezone, not what to build at this point.
Where essentially they're approving, all set of allowed uses.
I think that's staff's, planning staff's position is what they're going to build and bring it back. So I'm just, I know a lot of times we go 30, 40 minutes to an hour down that path and we're just trying to rezone a piece of property.
Right.
Not what's being built.
I think you all bring your expertise in each of your backgrounds and fields and experiences, and I think that's super, super helpful, but we can certainly clarify, look for a place to add language like that in there.
I would just say that might be helpful, especially for, you know, new people coming on board, what, what our expectations are as a planning board.
You know, I actually just sent Meredith an, an email tonight asking about onboarding for new, new members. And so I do think, premature to talking with Meredith besides a quick email, I do think that that is something that is very important, especially being new and, and everybody's been new. So I'm speaking now, so if you all have any ideas of something that could be helpful, please get that to Meredith, because I would like to see something in place so you don't come, the first meeting, yes, you come, you don't know anything, you not, not sure what's happening here, but then after that, I'd like for you to have some sort of idea and a place to ask all of your questions, which Meredith will provide, and they are amazing resources, anyone. But I would like to see something in place so that a new member could be like, here, this is, you know...
I think this is a good place to put, I mean, this is Rules of Procedure, right? So this will be a good place to start and then, you know, the Robert's Rules of Order, that's another...
Yeah, I think we need a little bit more added on to that.
But anyway, just, just something I thought might be helpful to...
Right.
Kind of define in these Rules of Procedure that I didn't see in there.
That's, no, that's really helpful. I think we, we refer to the duties and powers that are in the LDO, but we don't explicitly lay them out here, so we can certainly do that. So I, I will point you all back to that, that section B, that under planning board and the review bodies section that talks about what the duties of the planning board are. But we could certainly add that here to clarify specifically what they are, so they're all in one spot. Yeah.
On your point around the side, not really a side discussion, but I enjoy some of the pieces, you're trying to figure out what you're going to do with that land, so I can better understand it.
I agree.
But I think you could also turn around and say that could be limited by the chairman. Like if we're going 40 minutes talking about X, all right, we're not...
But I think to Donnie's, on the short side, that, that the rezonings are probably one of the most confusing things we see because we, we're approving a, a set of allowed uses, but then we, a lot of times get a concept plan of what they want to do, but if we rezon it, they could throw it in the trash when they leave and bring something else in. And, and we get too hung up on what they're putting in front of us sometimes rather than all the allowed uses that could be there.
Well, the, one thing I'll say in, in, in addition to that is the discussions that we do have are helpful when they're considered of what we can expect the town board to be looking at, because I know it's a lot of waste of time if we just say, yeah, you're good, and then they spend more, the next month, putting all that stuff together and then they go to the town board and the town board shoots them down because of something that we didn't bring up that we could have. So I think it's a...
But I think that's something that they should have already addressed before it even got here. Is that not correct? Yes.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, but I see what you're saying, because there's many opinions and thoughts here as well, so yeah.
And then to, to your question about what might be done is to help onboarding, you know, one thing might be if planning, the planning board or the planning staff took the new board member and for like an hour, just an hour appointment and like spend 30 minutes going over one particular case from more recently and just wa, and watch the YouTube video and say, so this is what happens, this is what happens, this discussion went too long, you know what I mean? Or, or you know what I mean? Just some clarifying points of there's some orientation of understanding how one of those trickier sessions might go, might be an idea to, you know, to do.
Thank you.
I think too, having these rules, reviewing them again, talking about them will also be helpful and I think we have talked about different trainings we may be considering doing at future meetings in general too, so. There's nothing else, that concludes the attorney's report.
All right, thank you. Is there any other business from the planning board?
I just have a question for Meredith. Is there any update on any of the historic district planning or research that's being done by staff?
I do not have an update for you, but we can, if you want to catch up offline, we can get reestablished.
Cool, perfect, thank you.
All right. Any other business? Here none, the floor is open for a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion where you adjourn.
Have a motion for adjournment.
That can't be debated. It can't be debated. I read it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Assuming no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion is adjourned.